Good history.
I got scared going across the mack and all that.
Call the meeting to order. Mr. Bell, do you need to send the flag?
Sure will. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of guests, Dr. Perrett?
Yes. It's always exciting times when we can celebrate our students for success tonight. And tonight, we have two groups. And if I can get Coach Ross Kelly to come on up and bring his group from Lake City, the first one we will be honoring is our Lake City Middle School volleyball team. And when we get up here, I'm going to ask the coach if he will introduce that. Just go ahead and stand right across through there. That'll be good.
All right. Stowe Denman here, Melancy 6th grade, Stella Pharoah 7th grade, Reagan Green 7th grade, Lakewood, uh, Rodney 8th grade, sorry, Caroline Arden 8th grade, Ansley Wilbeck 7th grade, Coach, over here. Well, everybody else is in a basketball ward cheer tonight, so we're kind of smaller than normal.
So tonight, I've got a resolution from the Board of Education that says, Anderson County Board of Education, a board resolution honoring Lake City Middle School volleyball team. Whereas the Lake City Middle School volleyball team is congratulated for their outstanding season, and in recognition thereof, each individual associated with this team is deserving this commendation. And whereas the Lady Lakers compiled an exciting 13-1 season record, and whereas the Lady Lakers were three-peat district champions with Dakota Berlin earning the MVP status, and whereas the students and alumni are justly proud of the accomplishments of the Lake City Middle School volleyball team, and wish to express their appreciation and continued support now thereof. Be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Education that this board congratulates the 2021 Lake City Middle School Lady Lakers volleyball team and their coach, Ron Ross Kelly, for their outstanding season. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be spread upon the minutes of the Anderson County Board of Education and a copy forwarded to the Lake City Middle School. Adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected Board of Anderson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the 11th day of November 2021. And I just want to congratulate you on that and for doing a great job. And we really thank you for being a, just a great, a great team, but you're, you go out and you make a great example for other students that you can, not only, we've talked to Mr. Ross Kelly, not only that you do good on the court, you do good in class. So congratulations. Give this to you. And it's not voting on yet, but we will be voting on it. Anything you want to say?
No, just a great group of girls. They work hard and show up. We're always about a foot and a half shorter than everybody else, so they do pretty well. So I'm proud of them.
Anything you want to say? Hold her out wide. Congratulations.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you. We'll invite the Clinton Middle School up and...
Want to get?
Yep.
Cheers on here.
Yep.
Come on up here, girls. Where'd Ronnie go? Ronnie Ross Kelly, it's good to see you in the education field and doing well. I had him in school. He's one of my students.
She's probably more surprised that I'm here than...
No, no, no. All right. For Clinton Middle School, Coach Thomas and most of their volleyball team are unable to be here because of basketball. Just Lake City has basketball in cheer, and they did have a game tonight. We've got three girls here, Parker McGee, Ally McCamey, and tell me your name.
What's Alyssa?
Alyssa is here. Okay. Ally is actually Andy McCamey's great niece, and Parker is Pam Crawford's granddaughter. So we've got a little family here. Okay. Anderson County Board of Education's raised a resolution honoring the 2021 Clinton Middle School volleyball team. Whereas the Clinton Middle School Lady Hawks volleyball team is congratulated for its outstanding achievements, and in recognition thereof, each individual associated with the team is deserving of commendation. And whereas the Lady Hawks posted a 16-2 record, including the regular season play, district tournament, and sectionals. And whereas the Lady Hawks were undefeated district champs. And whereas Lady Hawks, Josie Moody was named district tournament MVP, and Lady Hawk, Eddie Gamble, was named to the all-district team. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Education that this board congratulates the 2021 Clinton Middle School volleyball team and Coach Megan Thomas for her outstanding, for their outstanding season. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the Anderson County Board of Education and a copy be forwarded to the Clinton Middle School. Adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected school board of Anderson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the 11th day of November 2021. Congratulations, girls. Do you want me to keep this or send this with one of them too big?
You can, we can, we'll keep that and we'll take it to Clinton Middle School. I'll get it to the principals where they can get it to them tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, girls.
Thank you, girls.
Do I hear a motion on the resolutions?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made. And second, we approve the resolution to Lake City Middle School and Clinton Middle School. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And two, we have Lauren McLean here from Oak Ridge Board of Education tonight. She's here doing an evaluation on us, so y'all need to be on your best behavior, okay? We need to make her look good. But no, we thank her and Oak Ridge Schools for allowing her to come tonight. And just, if you see anything you're surprised about or questions about, just speak up.
Persons to be heard. Being none. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
Still moved. Second.
A motion made and second to approve the consent agenda. There's a resolution on the consent agenda that we need to read before we vote, don't we, Scott?
Yes, we do, Mrs. Chairman. Our Director of Schools tried to sneak it in, but we want to... We want to read a resolution by the Anderson County Board of Education honoring Dr. Tim Perrott and his staff. Whereas our Director of Schools is a great leader in our system and makes decisions based on what is best for the students and staff. And whereas he has created appropriate budgets for our district and helps provide the resources necessary for our schools to operate as a high-quality educational program. And whereas he provides support for the programs at the schools, helping students and faculty to grow and develop academically and socially as high priorities. And whereas he has built support within the community for our school system. And therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Board of Education officially recognizes the services of Dr. Tim Perrott and his staff members to the students, staff, and community of the school system, and extends its appreciation for his work to enhance the learning environment of students and the working environment of staff in our district. And be it further resolved that the Anderson County Board of Education hereby declares November 18, 2021, that's next Thursday, as the Director of Schools at Staff Appreciation Day in Anderson County Schools. And be it further resolved that each principal, each school principal takes necessary measures to implement the UTRUST appreciation program in their school and recognize our director this month. And be it further resolved that this resolution of appreciation be recorded and put in the minutes of the Board of Education as this 11th day of November 2021. So that's on the consent agenda, so we don't need a motion to approve that.
Any discussion about what's on the consent agenda? I can only echo what Scott has read. We argue and fuss, but he does a great job.
I appreciate it.
Especially through the pandemic and everything, that we've just had a great, great last year and this year. We appreciate it.
We've got, we've got a great group. We had a principals meeting this morning and a staff meeting. We got a great group. It's, it's a team effort, I can tell you that. I'm just glad to be part of it. Thank you for your recognition.
Any other discussion? If not all approved, say aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Executive approval or none? Comments from the chair? We have, I think everyone that's attending the TSB meeting in Nashville has the itinerary at your desk and to the chair. And we look forward to that up next weekend. Comments from the student board?
You come up to front. Yep.
Making him work.
You should stay where you are then.
We need him to walk.
He needs to walk.
Walk it off. Get ready for a game. Are you playing tomorrow night?
Yes, sir. I ended up getting a brace today, so I'll be good to go. All right. So it's been an exciting couple of weeks at Anderson County High School. First thing I like to talk about is our sports teams. So our volleyball team finished in the final four of the state tournament with our coach, Jamie Smith, being nominated and elected as the TWSAA Region 2 AF Bridges Coach of the Year. Our boys and girls cross-country teams both competed in the state championship recently in Nashville. Our girls team finished eighth overall, with our guys team finishing eighth overall. Sophomore Caitlin Fisher finished third overall and will be considered first-team All-State. Our football team recently beat Seymour 39-21 in the first round of the TWSAA playoffs, and will be playing Elizabethon for Round 2 tomorrow at home. Our soccer team, our girls soccer team, made it to substate this year but failed a signal mountain in penalty kicks. Now on the academic side, well, academic, more student athlete, our student athletes have started committing and signing during the early signing period. We've had five so far. We have Leah Freeman, Kylie Alvis, Mackenzie Henderson, Connor Martin, and Luke Lowry. Leah is committing to Kennesaw State for volleyball. Kylie is going to LMU to throw, I believe, discus or shot put, but I'm pretty sure it's discus. Mackenzie Henderson is going to ETSU for softball. Connor Martin signed yesterday, actually, to Travec and Nazarene for basketball, and Luke Lowry will be signing to ETSU for baseball. ACHS could not be more proud of our high-achieving student athletes who will be taking their education and sports prowess to the next level. For academics, we had senior Benjamin Yearwood score a perfect 36 on his ACT, and he will be the fifth member to join the club of people who've scored a perfect 36 on their test at Anderson County High School in its history. We also had a few new additions to our 30-plus club in the recent ACT that was held in school. We had five new members join our 30-plus club, and the parameters are you have to score a 30-plus on your ACT. So that brings our total to nine members. So nine people in Anderson County High School have a 30 or higher on their ACT. Our junior class in Anderson County High School will be participating in a new ACT test program, and we're very, very anticipating, well, not a good word choice there. We are highly anticipating the results of this new program. It will help individualize each student's different test-taking strategies and anything that they may need help on to further their score on the ACT and help them test better. Thank you.
And, Mr. Sully, what was your ACT score?
I got a 31.
He's one of that. So, great job.
He's humble as you are.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, everyone. To begin, I would like to update you on all the good things happening with Ms. Merriman and gear up. First of all, there have been college visits almost daily with Clinton High School students. Some of our recent adventures have been to Johnson University, UTK Knoxville, Tennessee Tech, Lee University, Tuscalum, and ETSU. Additionally, we have completed over 106 FAFSA's. So Clinton High School has over half of our senior class already getting, making a giant step towards getting that money for college. We have dragons bringing in college acceptance letters every day, as well as letters stating our students have won merit-based scholarships. And finally, the Lincoln Memorial University College of Business hosted a Lunch and Learn coordinated by CHS teacher, Mrs. Frost. It was kind of our version of a TED Talk with tacos. Some other good news at Clinton High School is that we have nine seniors in the 30-plus club, three juniors in the 30-plus club, and then one sophomore already have a 30 or above on their ACT. Right now, as sports are winding, oh wait, we also have 543 students who have a gold or silver card, which means they have over a 3.0 GPA. Right now, as sports are winding down, I would still like to congratulate Coach Keith and our football team for winning their last game against Karnes with a blowout score. I also want to give out a shout-out to our National Honor Society for inducting 46 new members last month. Recently, we've started a new club, Fellowship Christian Athletes, or FCA, at Clinton High School, and we've already had two great turnouts at our hangouts so far. And I have one more thing to brag on, and that is our band and choir. We have had student Sean May and Ian Circe make the All East Tennessee Choir, and the band has been winning many awards lately, including first place in Color Guard, percussion and visual effects, second place in music, and third place in drum major at the Music and Castle competition. And at the Wild and Rich competition, they got first place in band, color guard, drum major, percussion, and were the overall grand champions. Despite our small hiccups these past few months at Clinton High School, we still remain strong, determined, and great school. Thank you.
Directors report.
Yes. It's exciting. I think that one of the things that Anderson County Schools does, does a lot of things well, but one of the things we like to do is we want to celebrate our staff. And UTRUST allows us to do that. So today, at our principals meeting, we handed out our Above and Beyond Award with our $25 check to our, all of our custodians, and so we need to recognize them tonight. And I can start. We have Preschool Dennis Rushlow and from Lake City Elementary School, Marshall Violet.
Don?
Yes, I have at Clinton High School, Rick Garner, and at Central Office, Ricky Simcox.
At Norris Elementary, we're honoring Evie Holcomb. At Fairview Elementary, Roy Isell. And Norwood Elementary, Johnny Hall.
And at Lake City Middle, we have Donald Harness. And at CRCS, John Williams.
At ACCTC, Michael Gorman. At Clinton Middle, Michael Seaver. At Clarkson Elementary, Dan Wolf.
Let me do Dale's?
Yeah.
Grand Oaks Elementary is Rachel McNeely. Norwood Middle is Omar Reden. At Anderson County High School is Jeff Carroll. Andersonville Elementary, Janice Goins. And at Dutch Valley Elementary, Gary Darty.
I have at Bryceville Elementary, Erica McMahan. And Norris Middle, Becky Jeffers.
And, and our custodians, I've done our evaluation of all of our principals. I've been at all of our schools. And anytime you get to go in our schools, they're always clean. They do a fantastic job, even through this pandemic. They have been above and beyond, doing whatever they needed to do to make sure our schools were clean. They looked nice. And, and the other thing they do is they build relationships with our kids. I've got a grandson that went to Andersonville one year, and he talks about junior all the time. And, and he even come to one of his basketball games. And I think that's what, they are such a part of this community. They're a part of our schools. And you know, there used to be, years ago, when we would have our classified banquet, there'd be a big wheel up there. I don't know if any of you remember. It talked about all the spokes in the wheel. And without our custodians, we would have a big spoke missing in our wheel. So congratulations to all of them for doing a great job. The other thing I have, I hope you all got a chance to look at our report that we do each month. There's a lot of stuff in there from our schools, a lot of pictures, and just a lot of great things going on at our schools. The last thing, as you know, today is veterans today, and we had veterans program in almost all of our schools today to honor our veterans. And we're so glad that we get a chance to honor them on this special day. So again, if you, we have a lot of veterans that work for our school system. Thank you for your service. And if you're watching, thank you for what you do for us each and every day. That's all I have. Mr. McCain?
Go with their committee reports. Mr. Gillan Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Budget Committee met Monday. I appreciate Mr. McCamey filling in for me while I was out gallivanting. So I was trying my best to get home. I was. There are two appropriations.
And I'm going to get to them.
We're going to get to them. I might be finished before you get, get them up. Appropriation 1A is from the 141 Fund to appropriate retirement accruals, $525,000. 1B is appropriate funds for the Child and Adult Care Food Program, $15,984.48. Both of those appropriations were approved by the Budget Committee Monday night and sent to the full board for approval, and I so move.
Motion in second to approve appropriations 1A and 1B. Any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No?
I got to do a blow call.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mr., Mr. Gillan Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCain?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
We have three transfers. 2A is from the 141 Fund transferring the remaining fast-track funds into regular instruction, $6,535. 2B is school nutrition to transfer funds for the operational needs, $145,790. And 2C is the nursing grant for those services, $1,100. Those transfers were all approved by the Budget Committee and forwarded to the full board for approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve appropriations 2A, B, and C. Any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries.
That is all from Budget.
Building grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The building grounds committee met on Monday night, and we had three items on our agenda. And I'll start with the first one. We met with Russ Nelson of Energy Systems Group, ESG, providing an engineering overview of Phase 3 of the energy savings project plan and utilizing the ESER funds that will include air quality upgrades, HVAC upgrades, control system upgrades, window and fascia upgrades. Utility, maintenance, and capital replacement savings will be achieved when completed. And I so move that we met, we approved it, so I so move on it.
Second.
Motion made in second that we approve the contract with the ESG and move them forward.
And we need to make sure the motion has in there that it will be using ESER funds.
Right. It was listed.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
You said that had been approved by the law director.
Yes, yes, yes. The, the contract, I sent the, the draft contract to the law director today. I sent it to you all tonight, to where it has been preliminary. He's approved everything. He just, he can't do the final approval until he gets all the names and everything on it. But he said it in...
As to form.
As to form, yes. As to form, yes.
County Commission does not have to approve this, is that right?
No, no. The only thing they would have to approve, they would have to approve the contract if it's going to go over a fiscal year. So that's what we will have to figure out, if it's going to go past June 30th. But he says, he says he thinks he'll have my biggest part of it done by the end of...
It's a calendar year, not a fiscal year.
Okay. So we should be in good check.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we are second. Okay, voting.
We, let's vote on it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item is Norris Elementary School Principal Reneece Branham described and proposed replacement of a playground at the school. Local community member Bear Stevenson will donate $16,000 for the project, and Ms. Branham asked the board to match the donation to create an exclusive playground for all the students, and we approve that to match the funds, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second that we approve the matching funds for the Norris Elementary Playground. Any discussion?
I think that we should do something for Mr. Stevenson other than just saying thank you. I mean...
We've got that, Mr. Mr. Deal has already talked about that. He's going to have something in the works probably in the next month or two.
Okay, that sounds good.
And he's does, if you were here on, I know it's not live on Monday night, but you know, he's done stuff for Clinton High School, for Anderson County High School, for Dutch Valley. He's done stuff, he does stuff for Clinton City Schools, and he's just a great part of this community, yes.
Good old Dutch Valley boy.
He is a good old Dutch Valley boy, yep.
Pavilion he built out there.
Yep, that pavilion, yes. And he does every auction that they've ever had, for free, for every school.
I remember him going to Doris about 16 years ago. They used to bake sale auction. You'd be there.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? No. Motion carries.
And the third thing on the agenda that we had is, we had to terminate the soccer field lease with the city since the schools can use the high schools, since they're redoing the high school turf for football fields and soccer. So I so move on that.
And that's actually with the county.
It's county, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that was missed on my part. Sorry about that.
I so move.
I'll second.
Motion made in second to approve the termination of the lease with the county on the soccer field. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, on the building grounds committee.
Transportation, what, so we didn't, we tabled and discussed it. Nothing to come from that. Next would be the action items. Approve the 2022, 2023 calendar. Any...
And, and that calendar, I give that to ACEA and let them look at it, and they see no problems with it. And it is, it is basically the same calendar as last year. The only difference is the Friday before fall break is a full teaching day, and that in-service day is moved to November the 8th, which is an election day. And so...
Do I hear motion we approve?
Are we doing all three at once, or just that one?
Yeah, that'd be good.
You can do all three at once, yep. The other one is to approve the ACT test day for juniors on Tuesday, March the 2nd. And the reason we asked for that approval is because juniors and, and freshmen will come on that day. Freshmen will take a pre-ACT, and then seniors and sophomores. Seniors will do college visits on that day, and sophomores will do other work. The, the last one, too, is to approve an early-out day on Wednesday, on Friday, November the 19th, so we can do our COVID vaccine for our staff. That is the day before our Thanksgiving break. And as of yesterday, as of this morning, we had over 400 people signed up for it. So we will be doing that at CRCS, and that early out will be our Wednesday schedule. So it's about an hour and a half early.
So that, you'll run Wednesday schedule on Friday?
Yep, run a Wednesday schedule on Friday. If you approve that, we've already got the notice to go out to parents tonight, so they'll know.
Motion made, and second, approve the action items, A, B, and C. Any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I wanted to back up just a bit, if you don't mind, to transportation and ask Mr. Myers if, if, uh, you let the bus contractors know that the board was fully behind them with their problem?
Oh, well, yes, yes, I've talked to several of them.
So they know that the board supports? That's good, that's good, okay.
I'd also like to tell Ms. McLean that, and she's not, maybe not familiar, but we meet on Monday night, and a lot of this is already ironed out, and we'll come to our final meeting on Thursday night.
Any other items for discussion? That would be adjourned.
Have you got yours, Don?
Yeah, sure do, I already signed it.